Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. My name is Eliseo Munoz. I’m board vice president. I’d like to welcome you to be here tonight. President Lehman is in hospital. He’s doing all right. This is October 17th. It’s 5:30. This is a regular board meeting. I’d like to ask you, everyone, to rise for a moment of contemplative silence. And if you pray, perhaps a prayer for peace would be in order. And I’d also like to mention the, we might want to say a prayer for the families of our President Lehman and certainly for County Commissioner Pete Benavides and his family. Dr. Escobedo, would you lead us in the pledges, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I am Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas law and indivisible.
Roll call. It appears that, obviously, Mr. Lehman is out and Mr. Kalunga may be late. We don’t know. We’re not sure. Hopefully, he’ll be here in a little bit. Item five, Roman numeral five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of October 17th, 2006 with any corrections. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. Yes, a couple of things. Under closed meeting, level three grievance, items seven and nine will not be addressed in tonight’s meeting. That’s item seven and nine. Also, page, on item A11, page 041 is to be replaced, and I’ve sent that out to you. Also, on item A12, pages 047A through 047C are to be included as part of the agenda backup. Item A16 will not be addressed in tonight’s board meeting. That’s A16. Also, item C24, pages 139A through 139O are to be included as part of the agenda backup. That’s pages 139A through 139O. I send those to you. Also, under closed meeting personnel matters, item A36 will not be addressed in tonight’s board meeting. That’s item A36.
Is that it? Thank you. Roman numeral six.
Motion and second.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. We’re in a hurry. Item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of October 3rd, 2006, and the minutes of the special call board meeting of October 11th, 2006 with any corrections. Do I have any? Well, I have one on, that I’d like to entertain, for October 3rd. This is, let’s see, I don’t have the page number.
Mr. President has reported his presentation.
Yes.
For October 30th, it will be on page 606.
Okay. Page.
Page 006.
006. I’d like to add, after, after the paragraph, Mr. Munoz asked Mr. Peña, this is about the delinquent tax item, I’d like to add, Mr. Peña’s response was that, was, that they would provide, that providing the document would be no problem. I requested that document with delinquent taxes in a certain order be presented to the board, and he said that would be no problem. I’d like to add that. We still haven’t seen it, so if that should be on our suspense list, Norma? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as read with the additions?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Gonzalez? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item seven, superintendent’s report. Item A, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. As you know, BISD has always been very active with the United Way, and it gives us a great deal of pleasure to work with the United Way. And Drew Brown is sort of our head person for BISD to work with the United Way, and I’d like for her to introduce the presentation and some of the people that will be speaking concerning the United Way. Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Munoz, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, we have some special guests with us tonight. It’s my pleasure to introduce four members of the, representing the United Way of Southern Cameron County, who would like to make a special presentation. I’d like to call on Raymond Sisneros, the Board Treasurer, to come forward to the podium, Terry Alarcon, who is the Board Secretary, Berta Peña, who’s the Board Member, and Tracy Wickett, the President of the United Way of Southern Cameron County.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you all for having us here tonight, trustees. Thank you all. Again, my name is Raymond Sisneros. I’m the Treasurer of the United Way, and I’ve got some, as Drew mentioned, some board members and our executive director, Tracy, right behind me. First of all, I’d like to thank all of you for having us here tonight. It’s been, it’s been a pleasure working, as it is every year, working with your group, working with Drew, working with your administration, working with your employees, and not just teachers, everybody through our campaign. We’re here to let you know that you, I did yourselves again this year. You, your employees have pledged a total of $305,011. Let me pause it for a moment, and let me repeat that. $305,011, which was an increase from last year of $301,418. You guys did a great, great job. We look forward to doing your campaign. You’re very well organized. You set the pace for our campaign. You’re one of the first ones we do. And, and again, you set the pace again for us this year, did a great job. You’re one of our pace setters. Some of the more generous campuses that I wanted just to note, Pace High School gave a total of $20,215 or pledged this year. Gonzalez Elementary, $13,930. Brownsville Academic Center, $13,070. Butaz Elementary, $10,300. And Egley Elementary, $8,485. Those are great, great pledges, and again, just about all the campuses, they all gave money, and they continue to do that every, every year. We had 2,058 employees actually involved in giving, giving money this year with an average gift of $148 each one. So, again, thank you so much for what you do. Again, the money stays, stays here locally to fund our programs, and so we really thank you for giving back, giving back to the community. I invite, Drew, at this point, if we can invite the trustees down, I’d like to take a picture. We have a little, some that shows how much, how much you guys gave us. If we could take a picture with, with the trustees, that’d be, that’d be a great honor for us.
own people. Again, I’d like to thank the generosity of BISD employees. This all came from them, and it’s a great, it’s for our community. Again, thank you. Item two, notification of betterment fund change orders and contract change orders. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. If there’s any questions, I’ll be glad to answer.
Item three, presentation of amendment for approval of five additional fine arts positions for the 2006-2007 school year. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. As you can see on the, on the agenda item, we have already approved the positions. This is merely changing. I believe that Fine Arts Department said that they needed a band, Assistant Band Director rather than a choir director, and we’re just notifying you, we like to keep it above board. I did tell you we’re going to go after five choir directors, but Fine Arts decided that they needed a band, Assistant Band Director than a choir director, and just letting you know that we’re going to change that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything? Item four, presentation by Trendec of the biometric time and attendance system. Mr. Sanchez, is that yours?
Mine. It’s mine.
I’m sorry, Mr. Gonzalez. They’re all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Yes, as you well know, we’re looking at new systems of being able to do time and attendance and to be able to get the best value for the district, and one of the systems we’ll be looking at has been, it was in the budget, and it was approved in the budget, and we’re looking at it, and we’re going to get ready to purchase some of it, and I’d like to have Mr. Sanchez go ahead and introduce his presentation. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, board members. As you well know, we, we made a transition with BiTech. We’re doing some other things. We’re completing human resources and our payroll modules. We’re going fully electronic. The next step is to do this biometric time and attendance. We’re going to hear tonight a presentation that kind of combines what we need in such a system. For example, it has a lot of utilities that we can use other than time and attendance. Secondly, you know, it’s something that, that interfaces well with BiTech, and then it also has a utility maybe that, for us that are concerned with security, that the system can actually, biometric can go in and the last person to leave the campus that we designate him can set the alarms on and set them off. So, that’s just another, another utility that comes with it. So, to make our presentation, a short presentation, is Kathy Ball and Ken Fuller.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Munoz, fellow board members, administrators, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I will see if we can get our AV folks over here to put my presentation up on the screen.
I’m going to hold this up so we can see it.
Kathy, why don’t you take a walk up there? This is our biometric time and attendance system. We are out working in the K-12 education market, mostly focused here in Texas, but we also work nationwide. This is an integrated self-service kiosk that aggregates your finance, payroll, and workforce management together through one particular device. It includes a combination of the bioscreen, which Kathy’s going to bring around and show everybody, primetime and system integration, which is the actual putting it together with your BiTech installation. What sets us apart really is that Trendec focuses exclusively on the K-12 market as well as state and local government. We have a very good understanding of all the K-12 education and financial issues. We’ve integrated with very large districts, most notably the screen you see this evening is the one that is working at Dallas ISD in Dallas, where I have roughly 28,000 people enrolled in the system and using it on a daily basis. And of course, we’ve integrated with lots of different systems, including BiTech. And it’s that end-user experience of the biometric terminal that really sets us apart. It’s a touchscreen, which people find very friendly and easy to use, and of course, the biometrics and using the finger to enroll rather than a swipe card or some other type of mechanism, really ensures that your workforce and the people that are doing it are actually there, and it’s accurate, right down to everything that’s going on. The touchscreen is one thing that really sets us apart. Being able to have a system that does more than just time and labor over the lifetime is a tremendous investment and really get tremendous returns on that. So, time and attendance for bi-weeklies is one thing, but being able to integrate things in like supplemental pay or integrating in work orders to be able to figure out how long things, tasks may be being taken to do, displaying HR information out to your employees, integrating in substitute systems, or whatever else you can dream up can actually be programmed and put onto the system there. We talked a little bit about that. These are all really good, different add-ons that can be worked through and integrated in together. Incidentally, Dallas ISD won OAG, OAUG, which is the Oracle Application User Group, Innovator of the Year in 2005 for doing, linking in all of these systems. So, it’s, it’s pretty neat stuff. We put together some projected return on investment numbers. I looked at your ’06-’07 budget and ran it against some return on investment metrics that were developed by Nucleus Research. They’re out on the East Coast, and they’re a firm that actually looks at finished technology projects to determine accurate metrics. This is basically taking a look at your total payroll, cutting it down to about 10% of your payroll, which should be pretty close to what your hourly workers are, and then running it back across the metrics, which gives you approximate savings of about a million, two or so. And so, it’s an awful lot of money.
And how long, sir?
That’s, that’s what they project as first year, after you go through and you put the system in, and because of all the different savings that are there, it aggregates up to that.
Wow.
So, in summary, we wanted to keep this short, but Trendec is BiTech’s workforce management partner. We understand the K-12 environment very well. We allow you to integrate your workforce very effectively, and our implementation approach is very flexible, being able to do all different kinds of things with the system, not just time and attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. Is this, will this be integrated into our current payroll system, or is this a new system completely?
It will be integrated.
Integrated into. Okay. Very good. Any other questions, anyone?
We could have a hard copy of the presentation or a...
Could, could we have a hard copy of that, of your presentation?
Yes, we can. Get it to Mary Garza, and she will make sure that gets distributed.
Excellent. Mr. Fuller, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Item five, presentation of the Brownsville Independent School District Financial Report for a period ending August 31st, 2006. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Sanchez, it will be only to present a short presentation, answer any questions you might have.
Sure. Mr. Munoz, board members, Mr. Gonzalez, as you notice, this is your first installment of reconciling the, making sure we tie back to the original budget as approved. So, this is your first edition of the information. We integrated not only local funds, debt service, food service, but also our federal programs, and so the numbers that you see there is what we have integrated for your first month. And then, Mr. Munoz, the next month, you can start doing some trending.
That’ll be the first quarter. You’re absolutely correct.
Yes, sir.
And thank you. I see the 451 number. That’s, that’s what I was looking for. Does anyone have any questions or any comments? Thank you. Item B, standing board agenda items, board calendars. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. There’s a few things that I’d like to bring out on the board calendar. First thing, this coming Saturday, we have the Buddy Fund Meet at Sam Stadium at 7:30 in the morning. I think you all got a little stress ball to remind you of the Buddy Fund Meet. It’s a pretty one. We also have that evening, UIL Pick Skin Marching Contest at Weslaco, so we’re looking forward. I’ll be there, and all the bands from Brownsville will be there. We look forward to having a real good presentation at Weslaco. Also, the next week is Red Ribbon Week. It’s very important that we keep reminding ourselves that drugs are not good for our youth, and there’ll be numerous campus presentations throughout the district concerning Red Ribbon Week. We also have, for those bands that are continuing after the 21st of their Pick Skin, we have Area on the 28th. And then a reminder to everybody that the end of the month, next Saturday, at the end of the month, on the 29th, we will end daylight savings time and go back to regular time. And that’s important because buses and everybody waiting, the children waiting for the school buses. And then the big, the next big thing is, of course, kids voting, and that’s, Kids Voting Day is on the 2nd of November, and then we have the real election on the 7th of November. So, I’m just bringing you up to speed on some of the important things that might be happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I just have, I’d like to add, on November 4th, we have item 14 on this agenda, that we’re going to have one of our semi-annual auctions. So, on November 4th, this is next coming November, Saturday, we will have an auction, and we auction all kinds of good stuff. I think we have some vehicles. It will be interesting. You won’t be sorry you came, so you might want to come and see what you can pick up Saturday, November 4th. Item, item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time for citizens, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have any comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear on the sign-in sheet, which is located, it’s now right here, near the, it was in the back of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes tonight. Is that right, Mr. Saldana?
Right.
To complete his or her comments, with all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesman to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the use of open forum by, for example, anyone recklessly, uselessly, recklessly, repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an employee or officer, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the BISD’s formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF Local. With those cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear the general comments, and let’s see who’s first. Remember, you have five minutes. Mr. Alan L. Neely is first. Mr. Neely.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Munoz, board members, my name is Alan L. Neely. I’m a retired math teacher and math department head at Porter High School. I worked 35 years for BISD and one year in Austin ISD. Let me tell you what’s happened to me this school year. On August 18th, 2006, I interviewed for a math position at Lopez High School. On August 22nd, 2006, two days after the school year began, I was told that Lopez High School wanted to hire me as a math teacher. On September 5th, 2006, 11 instructional days into the school year, I was told that the main office said that Lopez High School had to hire ACP and Alternative Certification teachers before retired teachers, even though the Tech Education Code 21.003 says a school district may employ a teacher under an emergency permit if they have been unable to secure a certified and qualified person for the position. On September 8th, 2006, 15 days into the instructional days into the school year, the position was still not filled. On September 18th, 2006, 21 instructional days into the school year, the position was not yet filled. When I spoke with an administrator at the main office, I was told that board policy was delaying my hiring. I asked about “no child left behind,” specifically asked about “no child left behind,” and I was, I asked what specific board policy set a specific date for hiring of a retired teacher like myself. I got no specific answer on those questions. On September 28th, 2006, 24 instructional days into the school year, Lopez High School informed me that they did not know if they still had a math slot available. Strange, isn’t it? I have been making numerous public information requests and have seen the contract, the contracts for BISD for both JR3 and General Educational Services Corporation, the two third parties that BISD contracted to hire qualified retired teachers and administrators. Nothing in the two contracts mentions money that BISD will pay to the third parties. No mention is made regarding the pay, that each of the two third parties are to pay those retired employees. I have never before seen a contract to perform services that emits the amount to be paid for the services rendered. Have you? Two contracts for services to be rendered and no mention about money to be given for services rendered. Incredible. I am looking forward to tonight’s meeting. I know things are going to get better in this district, and BISD will truly be concerned about the “no child left behind.” In the meantime, I’m going to do my part to make sure that students in this district are not left behind, especially when I’m substituting for them. Lastly, I have just one question for you, and I know you cannot answer in public audience. My question is, why wasn’t I hired when no math teacher was available for so many days at Lopez High School? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. George E. Borrego, Miss Lanes issues.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, board members, administrators. I’d like to welcome Mr. Gonzalez to his first unofficial meeting as super. I wish you lots of luck, and you have all our support. I saw an item on the agenda where you’re splitting the curriculum position into two positions. It makes sense. We’re going to have somebody in charge of the elementary, and then somebody in charge of the schools, and then somebody in charge of the in charge. But that’s okay. Probably the most important position we have is curriculum. We need a lot of expertise, and we need a lot of help in that area if we are to succeed. So, I think that’s a good move. Not that you asked me, but I think it’s a good move. There’s a couple of problems that I wanted to discuss with you. Hopefully, you’ll take them to heart. Some principals are making our janitors work split schedules. I don’t know why it makes sense. I know it doesn’t make sense to the janitor or the maintenance worker because he’s got to go home in his car. Fortunately, now it’s only $2 a gallon, as opposed to $3. There’s no guarantees it’s going to stay there. Some of our janitors have extra jobs based on the fact that they don’t get paid a lot of money. We’re working on that. And of course, they have their family. The more time they can have with their family, the better. Wouldn’t it be nice if we could go back to normal schedules for our, for our janitors? Another item of concern is, we have a lot of grievances coming up the pike. A lot of them are not making a lot of sense, but if an employee needs to be represented, he needs to be represented. Let’s push interest-based problem solving, and for those of you that don’t know what it is, I’d be glad to have lunch with each and every one of you, not all together because that would be a board meeting, in order to explain what that is, because it is a very important process that we can follow that will allow us to use our resources on taking care of our kids and our staff rather than working on petty problems. Finally, I was blessed this past weekend to be able to make a trip on BISD money to go to Fort Worth for a social studies curriculum conference, which was very nice, and I was with a lot of middle school teachers. And a lot of them expressed their concern about their schedule as being a little difficult to work with. I think they have nine periods. I don’t know how you can have nine periods, but maybe one day I’ll get permission to have, to go to a middle school and try to run a class with us, a class day with nine periods. We know that our focus is talks. Unfortunate as it may be, that is... Unfortunate as it may be, that is our focus, because that's where our results are going to come from, that's where the no child left behind is taken care of, where all things are being taken care of. You can give us a computer in every classroom. You can give us study guides. You can give us tutorials. You can give us all kinds of things. That costs money, by the way. But the most important thing is to allow our teachers a class size that they can work with. And you can get on the internet, and I can get you all kinds of studies that say the lower the class size, the better the results, even without a computer for every student. The interaction between 20 and 25 students with a teacher is a heck of a lot better than 35 or 40. Please address the issue of class size in the high school, in the middle school, and in the elementary. I think it's taken care of by state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borrego. Next speaker is Commissioner Ernesto De Leon. Mr. De Leon.
Good afternoon. Honorable members of the Brownsville Independent School District Board of Trustees, Mr. Gonzalez, Superintendent, congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, I applaud the in-house selection to have this most important job, which is a leadership role in the education of the children of this community. There will always be those who disagree with any decision that is taken. And let me commend you all for saving the taxpayers in the district in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 by doing what you've done. And probably most likely, this gentleman would have been selected even if we went outside and got people to suggest, who do we, be the best qualified? All in said and done, may I point out that no one individual can do it alone, not Mr. Gonzalez, no General Edwar, not even the quarterback in the football game, no matter how great they are. They all depend on the staff, the army, and the teammates to help him get the job done. Similar situation here. Gonzalez, you need to rely on the help and expertise and dedication of every BISD staff member. And, and may I say, I don't consider myself the sharpest tool in the shed, but I do tell you that by pulling together and offering suggestions as to how the job can better be accomplished of educating our children, this can be attained. What a great feeling it would be for the, all of BISD staff to continue turning this district around, and thus making it the envy of every school district in the great state of Texas. And why not the United States of America? And I ask why not? And I want to tell you, si se puede. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Our last speaker is Father Armond Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for inviting me to be here this evening. I am Armond Matthew, a member of the Oblate Fathers and Executive Director of Kids Voting USA Brownsville. I have a twofold purpose in being here, to express very sincere thanks and to ask for your support on a special project. Thank you, Mr. Munoz, members of the board, and Mr. Gonzalez, for your very generous support of our kids voting program. Very special thanks to Ms. Mary Jo Mon files. As you know, the Kids Voting USA Brownsville is a partnership between the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Southmost College Center for Civic Engagement, and all of the schools of Brownsville, public, private, and home schooling. This partnership, and consequently, Kids Voting USA Brownsville, would not exist except for the guidance and generous help of Ms. Mon files. Thanks to Mr. Fernando Perez, Ms. Christina Barrientes, all the members of the BISD administration, all the principals, all the teachers, for your generous collaboration with us. Obviously, Kids Voting Brownsville would, goes nowhere without you. Thanks to Dr. Sandy McGeehee of the Brownsville Herald. She ran the kids voting program in the 2000 national election cycle. We are simply building on the great foundation she established. Thanks to Mayor Trevino, Mr. Charles Kabler, and Mr. Robert Esparza of the city of Brownsville, and the various sponsors. We have banners flying over main thoroughfares at nine key locations throughout the city. That should increase awareness throughout our community of November 2nd Kids Voting Brownsville Day, and that's the object of my special petition this evening. As you may recall, on November 3rd of last year, at Homer Hannah High School, Mayor Eddie Trevino issued a proclamation designating the Thursday before the first Monday of November, Kids Voting USA Brownsville Day in perpetuity. The first anniversary is coming up soon, and all of us at Kids Voting believe that we must celebrate this first anniversary as grandly as possible. Otherwise, the impact of the mayor's proclamation will be lost, and that would be a great loss, not only for the schools, but I believe for all the, the entire community of Brownsville. All the schools of Brownsville have been invited to create their own activities and celebrate Kids Voting USA Brownsville Day in any way they choose. That will make it possible for each school to involve all the students, as well administration, faculty, and parents. Mr. Gonzalez will be visiting schools, and Dr. Juliette Garcia, President of the University, will be visiting schools on November 2nd. Ms. Angela Burton at the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce is bringing the Texas Secretary of State, Mr. Roger Williams, to Brownsville explicitly to visit schools on November 1st. And of course, all of the students will be given the opportunity to vote. Dr. Joseph Savallette, Director of the UTB TSC Center for Civic Engagement, is preparing an electronic ballot. In 2004, 40,000 of the 50,000 students in our schools in Brownsville voted. That was an 80% turnout, and I think you will agree, somewhat higher than the usual Brownsville adult vote. On the bottom of that special ballot we prepared for the students, we placed a question. Will your kids voting experience motivate you to vote in the future? 90% of those students, uncoached, replied yes. So there is the benefit of kids voting to the entire community and our hope for the future. I invite you to look down the road, five, 10, 15 years. I have too much mileage, I probably won't be here that long. But in any case, I invite you to look forward that long and see an 80% voter turnout in Brownsville. That will make our community recognized as a model for the entire nation, and that will make every effort that we've put into kids voting eminently worthwhile. We invite all of you to talk up November the 2nd Kids Voting USA Brownsville Day and help us celebrate it in a big, big way, proper to Brownsville, our all-American city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father Matthew. This concludes our public audience. Do we have one more? Well, we're going to go into, into executive session. Is item eight, is Mrs. Corina Vera here tonight? Mrs. Corina Vera. Mrs. Corina Vera.
Announced it outside?
Yes, Mr. Saldana.
Mr. Munoz, her name was announced three times in the foyer and out on the, on the public steps, and there was no response.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Saldana. That being the case, we will, we will not hear item eight. We'll move on to item roman numeral 10, consent agenda. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there's no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. Let me enumerate them and correct me if I'm wrong, please. Item 10, item 11, item 12, item 14. Item 16 was pulled. Let's see. Item 20, item 21, section C, item 22, item 23, section D, item 25, section E, item 26, section F, item 27. Do I need to go through the rest of these items? The personnel matters, closed meeting? Item 28, item 29, item 30, 31, item 32, 33, item 35, item 36 was pulled, item 30, well, item 37 is consultation, and 38, so that's it. Is, anyone have anything? Mr. Powers?
I moved to accept. I second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Approved unanimously, thank you. Okay, first item that we will discuss is item 13. Recommend approval to amend the middle school course listing guide for the 2006-2007 school year. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Galván, discussion.
Yes, I just wanted more clarification. I know that the last paragraph will be omitted, but what is the credit that they will be getting? The full credit or the passing grade or?
Yes, Ms. Galván, if I may, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. I think, well, the thing that's being changed is that the way it read before, before the recognition being made, was that if a student failed one semester of the class, and this is basically for middle school, they're taking it for high school credits, such as algebra and so on and so forth, they would not get any credit. That was it. And there was no half-credit or partial-credit, so basically, if a student failed one semester, they would get, they would not be able to obtain that credit or even have a credit. By eliminating this, now the student has the ability, if, even if they, for one semester, they did not make the 70, however, they, they averaged it out, and it's above a 70, they will maintain the full credit. Also, a student can possibly make a 72 and then, and a 64, but won't get the full credit, but will get the half-credit, and they will be able to take that to high school with it. And that's more in line with the high school way of doing credits. So that's, that's what they're trying to do, is align it, because it is a high school credit, can be taken as a high school credit, to align it to the same grading procedures as they do have it in the high schools. We didn't have that before. We have that ability.
And my question, what, what grade is needed to earn the credit?
70.
A 70, okay, because it looked like we were, we were removing that. That was being deleted from the bottom of the page, and it did specifically mention a 70.
The 70 will be, still may maintain. It's the way we, we, the student will receive credits, what's being changed.
Good. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Aguilera? Just, just to note, there was a reference to page 50 and 51, that should read page 20 and 21 on the item there. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see. Item 15, recommend approval to hire retired teachers in the critical areas of need and to be compensated according to their years of experience, degrees earned, and certification, licensure, in accordance with the approved 2006-2007 compensation plan. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Have a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Powers?
Thank you. Thank you, President, Acting President, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Gonzalez, I want to compliment you on this item, because I'm glad that we're going back and letting the principal, if they want to hire a retired teacher, I think that should be their call, and I'm glad to see it, because I didn't like hiring JR3 and that other company, whatever their name was. But I highly recommend, this is a step in the right direction, like Mr. Neely said. When you've got qualified teachers out there that are wanting to come back to work, they don't want to play golf, I mean, just, the principal should have that call. Thank you.
Mr. Aguilar?
I agree that at least now we're going to give our professionals, they've been trained in certain fields, now we, we have someone, I'd rather have a retired teacher than a substitute. No things against substitutes, however, we need to have educated, certified teachers in the classroom. So that's a good move.
I, I think we all agree to that. I did have a couple of questions, Mr. Gonzalez. Is this for full-time only? What are we contemplating here?
Yes, Mr. Munoz, members of the board, this is for full-time employment. We're looking at bringing back teachers that are, you know, we did have a contract with JR3, and the other company can remember. Mr. Penney, can you help me out? What was the name of the other company?
Yes, sir. That would be General Education Services.
General Education Services. However, those, those contracts have expired. What we're doing here is bringing, allowing the school district to go ahead and hire retired teachers and bring them back in accordance with the compensation plan approved by the school district, which is excellent. There's a lot of good teachers out there that are, that will be available. This is for this year only, so we'll be able to bring them back if we decide to hire this year or next semester, and so we can bring them, bring them in that way. Also, if we decide to go part-time, because there is a need for a part-time teacher, this will also allow us to, to do a part-time teacher for half a day if we only need a half-a-day teacher for whatever. So this will allow the district to do it for this school year. What I am proposing in the spring is to go ahead and set up a, a policy committee meeting where we can address the issue of retire, rehire. They will take, will sort of set the tone for the next year and the following years about our retire, rehire policy. So this is the first step to allow them to come back this year, and then sometime in the spring to be able to implement a policy that will address the issue on a perpetual basis.
Great. I think that's an excellent move. We can see how it works out. Was this planned to be, or are we going to have one-year contracts? Are the, will these be contractual?
These will be contractual people. They will have all the same rights as any other teacher in the district. One thing that I do want to mention is that if a teacher has been out of the district or out of teaching for at least one year, they will not be penalized for teaching. Now, if they have, if they've been, if they've been out of the teaching for less than a year, they will, will be penalized in accordance to the rules and regulations as required by law. So any teacher that's been out for a year already, that's retired for a year or more, they will not be penalized. They'll be able to draw a check from BISD and their full return.
Great, great. I want to thank you for doing that. Several of us have advocated that, especially some, some, some folks that may want to work half a day. And we have needs, and, and, and these are very, very qualified people that certainly have, can offer a lot to the district. I'm glad we're, we're doing this, and I applaud you for that move. And we can fine-tune it after we see what sort of experience we have this year. Ms. Galván?
I did notice that it, you are hiring retired teachers in critical areas. So just a clarification then, if we have an elementary teacher that is needed in bilingual, that person will not be hired?
If it's determined, the, the, the policy is very clear, Ms. Galván, on, on, on the state legislature and of it, and so with us, that the local school district determines the critical need areas. So if it is determined due to the fact that we cannot find bilingual teachers, and we declare that as a critical need area, we may do so. I believe on the backup, we, we did say there is going to be, in addition to areas already included, which is math, science, we'll also be looking at counseling, nursing, fine arts, band, choir, art, music, ROTC, diagnosticians, occupational physical therapists, speech therapists, assistant speech therapists, speech pathologists. So whenever the, the district deems that we are in short supply and is a critical need area, as long as we declare it as a critical need area, that's up to local control now. We will be able We will be able to declare it as a critical need area, and we will be able to hire retired teachers in those areas.
Want to have anything else? We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Excuse me?
All opposed? I'm sorry, excuse me.
There, there's, there's some issues regarding the, the amount of time, the deadline, Mr. Gonzalez, as far as when they've been out and, and what their situation. I think Mr. Penada can better address that regarding the situation with TRS and, and the actual date that's, that's critical here.
Yes, they have to be out for a year, right, Mr. Penada? And they have to be out, before they can retire, they have to be out at least a month before they can come back.
If I may, Mr. Gonzalez, anyone who retired prior to 2001 can receive the full benefit of both packages, all their annuities and their pay. After 2001, we would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. If they've been out, separated from the district for at least a year and are in a shortage-needs area, that, there's more leeway for those individuals. However, for anyone that we may want to rehire who's not in a shortage-needs area, that becomes a little grayer for us, and we would handle that on a case-by-case basis with the employee, with the employee in front of us contacting TRS so that we make sure that the employee is fully aware of all the benefits that he or she may be entitled to or not entitled to. So it does differentiate on a case-by-case basis for certain employees.
Thank you, Mr. Penada. Anyone else have anything?
I also had a question on, are you also looking at possibly retirees for administrative positions?
Not at this point. However, when we do come up with the policy on it, that's certainly an area that we could address on policy. And it needs to be in policy eventually. This is just for this year. It will not carry over to next year. So we definitely need to have a policy committee meeting and be able to address, address this as a miscellaneous policy only for our district.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 17, recommend approval to eliminate the current administrator for curriculum and instruction position and create the administrator for elementary curriculum and instruction, and administrator for secondary curriculum and instruction positions at pay grade six and 226 days for the 2006-2007 school year. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, I, I think this is an excellent idea. We are always in the curriculum committee, always asking for people to monitor our programs, to be on top of it so we can enhance our educational system. I believe the system itself will allow us to do what we want to do as a district. So I applaud the administration for coming up with this idea also. Mr. Munoz, if I may, I did circle also 18 and 19, but what I really wanted to do is the same kind of remarks. I think that's the direction we need to go with the district. So if you don't want to bring up, that was the only point that I wanted to congratulate the administration for allowing this to happen, this, looking at.
Counselor, can, can, are we going to have to vote individually on 18 and 19 since they weren't?
I would recommend that you do so. Either that or get a motion to consider 17, 18, and 19.
I'll amend my motion to let's approve item 17, 18, and 19.
Second.
Well, I had already seconded, so I have my second to.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's fine.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? So, so that, is that it, or do we have to do it now? That's it? Okay. 17, 18, 19 are unanimously approved. Thank you. Let's see. Item 24, recommend approval of budget amendment number 50 in the amount of $461,000 for Fund 199 Local Maintenance for the Maintenance Department Districtwide Projects. Item 24. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second? Anyone have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion. I circled this myself. I had, I had a few questions. One was, was I noticed reference to fire alarm systems, district-wide suppression systems. What, what were we talking about? The reason, the reason I'm asking is, is we have a lot of money budgeted for fire alarms systems already, so I'm wondering why, why, why this is over and above.
Yes, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. Yes, on, on the, when we look at fire suppression system, those are basically in cafeterias and the hood areas for whenever there's, there's a fire, we need to, especially in the, in the, in the stalls, we need to use suppression systems that are there. We basically need to inspect all our suppression systems in, in every, in every campus and upgrade our fire alarm systems to be in accordance with the international codes that were adopted by the city. What we have done this year is we have set some money aside in the budget, however, we're going above what was already approved in the maintenance area, and because they were already approved, went over that or going over that, we need to bring some money in to be able to do that and keep it within the budget. So this is what we're doing. We're taking money out of fund balance to be able to do the things that we need to do to get in compliance on those systems that are already existing.
Will, will we make any adjustments from the, from the food budget on this, if they're for the kitchens?
If, if we need to, we will, and we will certainly address that. Right now, the most important thing, because we did not want to delay, was use 51 money for it. We can later transfer money from 101 to 199 to, to take care of that issue.
Okay, good. I wanted to comment that we have, one of the items is for security fencing and gates. I think that's an excellent idea. We, we all know that we need to, we, we need to, to, to close up some of our campuses, certainly to, to provide a little more security and, and direct ingress and egress into a manageable situation so, so our security will be more enhanced. What, and, and that opens it up to, to, to another item, security on campuses. I'd just like to make a comment. I, I had a discussion with, with the chief, for, for everyone's knowledge, and we are clustering some of our elementary schools. As you know, we have, we have five or six personnel, security personnel at each high school and a couple of people at each middle school. And as far as the elementaries are concerned, the 30, 33 elementaries, soon to be 34, we don't have anyone on each campus, but we do have cluster patrols. We have officers in, in patrol cars who check into each campus periodically during the day. So, so these, the campuses do have security in moments and certainly within a couple of minutes call. What, what I would like to do here is I would suggest to the administration that, that they prepare a, 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 a security survey and assessment and make a presentation to us on just what we can do to further enhance the security, particularly at our, our elementary schools. So I would ask Superintendent Gonzalez to do this, and perhaps at the next meeting, we can have a presentation conference on this item.
Sure, Mr. Munoz, members of the board. Chief, you're back there. And the thing about it is, security is our number-one concern. Safety of students is our number-one concern. We have decided to fence all, all the elementary schools and have one, one point of ingress, egress, just to let some, some parents know in case they haven't gotten to their school yet in the elementaries. We will.